Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our first regularly scheduled meeting for Haverford Township for one of our regular meetings, January 8th, 2024, 7:00 PM here in the Commissioner's Room. Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak?
President.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb?
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Here.
Commissioner Cavender?
Here.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Hart?
Here.
Commissioner McCollum?
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Chief?
.................................
Before we move on, I do want to explain something from last week. We had technical difficulties last week, which prevented us from broadcasting our meeting live, and it also interfered with our ability to provide the video feed for the meeting to YouTube. So if anybody watched, they would have seen still photos and heard the audio of the meeting. We are assured that that is fixed, but I just wanted to apologize on behalf of the township that we were not able to provide the video feed of that meeting. Our next item on our agenda is our Citizens Forum, where, of course, we provide 20 minutes for registered speakers and time for anyone willing to speak on an agenda item. This evening, I have no registered speakers, so I will invite members of the audience who would like to speak on an agenda item. Now would be the time. As always, I will start on my left. Anybody on the left side who would like to speak on an agenda item? Is there anyone on the right side of the meeting who'd like to speak on an agenda item? I will share one thing. Sent to the township, to the Board of Commissioners, care of me is a note that I would like to read aloud to my colleagues as well as to the public. I don't think the sender of this note will mind. Dear Larry and the entire Board of Commissioners, we want to extend our sincere thanks for all your efforts, past and present, for the library renovation. We are thrilled to see progress being made and are grateful for your investment in the future of our facility and the township at large. Best wishes for a successful new year. Sincerely, the Friends of the Haverford Township Free Library. Thank you, friends and colleagues, for everything we did to advance that cause. The next item is the Commissioner Committee Updates. Do we have any updates? Do we have any updates from any Commissioner Committees at this point? I do need to read one aloud from the Board of Fire. And one of us is going to find it. I have it. I know I am a poor substitute for Commissioner Wexler, and soon the next head of this department, this Commissioner Board, will provide this report, but I can report for December 2023 from the Haverford Township Bureau of Fire. There were 81 total incidents in the township. 62 of them, sorry, there were 81 total incidents that the Haverford Township Bureau of Fire reports on. 62 of those were within the township, and 19 were requests for aid from outside of the township. The average personnel per call was 16. 1415 personal hours committed to the incidents, 465 personnel hours committed to training in December. The Bureau of Fire responded to one working fire within Haverford Township on the 7th of December, 2023, and Haverford Township Bureau of Fire provided mutual aid to six working fires and one water rescue within Delaware County in the month of December. That is the report from the Bureau of Fire. Anybody else have anything to share? We will now move on to the Police Department's update. Chief, welcome back.
Our major concern is with the trees and the heavy rain we've had in the past couple weeks, that uprooting trees. But everybody's on standby, ready to go. They expect the rain, the heavy rain, to start tomorrow afternoon and the winds to follow. So Police Department is prepared. If we need additional manpower, we'll call them in. As I said, Public Works is on standby. So the monthly chief's report for December 2023, but I'll back up and I'll give you an update to something that happened over the weekend. There was a shoplifting incident at Kohl's for about $2,000 worth of clothing was stolen. Police responded there. The suspects exited the store, got into a car. Police saw them. They, in the back parking lot, the suspects rammed a police car, and a short pursuit ensued downtown township line. They ended up down around Lewis, which is down by the Sunoco Station down there. They bailed out of the car. Upper Darby was called along with us. Our K-9s tracked. We arrested one in the car, and the officer was arrested, the second one on Arlington Road as they tried to flee through the backyards along there. So they were both arrested. They're both remanded to prison right now, but just to give you an update, because you may see that on social media at some point, I want that to go for another month. So for December 2023, 17 criminal arrests, zero juvenile, 87 traffic citations, 13 non-traffics, 14 written warnings, and 583 parking tickets. And I reported, I think, last month without officially, the burglary at the Exxon Station and the Fenner &amp; Haley Paint Store, and arrest was made on that. We had 24 thefts from autos. One motor vehicle theft attempt, but 24 thefts with unlocked cars. Three of them were broken windows, where they broke into the, smashed the windows, which we're starting to see some of that now, but most of the stuff was just, cars were just ransacked. So I'll just give you a quick streets that they happened on. 2,000 Block East County Line Road, Kenneworth Road, 600 Block 2 there, James Drive, 100 Block, 200 Block of Bellfield, 600 Block of Winfield, another one on James, Fulmer Avenue, Stanley Avenue, Heatherwood Road, Manor Road, Marthart, Buck, Buck, Cherry Lane, windows smashed on Cherry Lane, another one smashed on East Park, and then Marthart Avenue, Shelton Road, Robmore Road, Heatherwood, Garler, Garler, Jacqueline, and 400 Glendale. You see, it's all over the township. As I said, we have been working diligently with other police departments. Arrests have been made, but it just continues. So, you know, I wish I could say to you, we have an answer to it, but there is no easy answer to it at all. It's just, we've been reporting it for a number of years that we've had, made multiple arrests, but it just continues. Commissioner?
Chief, you noted with one particular, I think it was Cherry, about the windows smashed. Is that the only location where windows were smashed?
There were three windows smashed, Commissioner. Let me back up on this. Cherry Lane, two on Cherry Lane, and one on the East Park. That's the only windows that were smashed.
And you said that is a trend, or we're seeing that more?
I'm sorry.
Is that new? I don't think I've heard that.
We've had windows smashed. Usually that happens in the parks and the dog park. Usually when somebody gets out of the car, leaves their valuables in there, but it hasn't happened on the streets. This is something that we're seeing now. So different groups are out there. Like I said, we're making arrests, but it just continues. Police assist to lower murren, police K-9 assist for burglary discovered. K-9 body was deployed, and the resident was clear, had an open-air sniff and yielded negative results. Police assist to lower murren on Christmas Eve. The track suspects following a stolen police in pursuit crash. The track was eventually terminated due to dangerous conditions, and another open-air sniff for possible illegal activity. Driver gave consent for the search, and no contraband was found. And that's my report.
Chief, was there something at the magistrate court recently?
Yes, we had an incident down there last week, I believe it was. It was a fight outside of the building with two people. It wasn't magistrate's court, it was at the juvenile portion of the, where they report in for their, meet their parole officers, their parole office. So there was a fight. We clarified, we had conversations with the chief from the park police, who, they have two officers on duty at all times when they're open. Anything that happens inside that building, they take care of, they make arrests, they transfer.
You say "they"?
Anything happens out, park police, I'm sorry, yes.
Park police.
Park police, and they have two officers assigned, they're full-time. So anything that happens outside of the building, we take care of that. So I think we've had probably three incidents since they've opened. One medical emergency and a few, a couple other, I'll call them fights or whatever they turn out to be, so.
You feel like the inside is adequately staffed? I shouldn't put you on the spot like that. Is the inside adequately staffed?
Yes, it is, it is. With the two park police there, they usually don't have problems there, but you're bringing people in who are on parole, and these two that were fighting were both juveniles, and they had a beef somewhere else, and they just happened to run each other in the hallway, and that's why the fight started.
And when you say they come in, do they come in on like a bus? Do they come?
No, no, they come in on their own. They can take public transportation, be driven. No, there's no buses.
That hasn't been an issue at all?
No, we haven't had any issues at all at the bus stops or anything like that. So we're monitoring very carefully, keeping a close check. And police are down there all the time anyway, because we're down in a court constantly. If not us, our courthouse is not taking over a whole area with the other courts closing. So there's always police in that complex. So I think with police cars parked out front, I'm sure helps a great deal if anything, anybody has any ideas they're going to start to. But remember, they're coming in to meet their parole officer. They don't want to be, do anything wrong where they're going to be violated and end up incarcerated somewhere, or so most of them are on their good behavior when they get in. But like I said, this fight was two who had a beef outside of the area, and it just happened to, poor planning, and nobody knew that would happen. They're running each other, and a fight started.
Chief, you're referring to park, and I don't know what, is it county police?
Park police, county park police, yes. They take care of the courthouse and all the parks. So there is a full complement of accredited police officers that work in the courthouse, and they, two of them are assigned.
That's not the sheriff's department?
No, not the sheriff's.
It's a separate police department.
Right. Sheriffs don't have that arrest powers outside of certain things that they are assigned to because of the laws in Pennsylvania. So it's just park police who are sworn police officers.
Okay, fully functional PD.
Yes.
Okay.
They are armed, they have all the equipment, they need to take care of business. And they operate on our channel during the day, our radio channel. They don't have to make phone calls, we hear them directly. If there's a problem, they call us direct.
Does anybody else have any questions for the chief?
Yeah, I do. So Chief, is it the park police who monitor the Magisterial District Court?
No, they do not. Not Magisterial Court. There's nobody in Magisterial Court except police officers who are there for hearings. We normally don't have problems in District Court itself unless, you know, there's usually a police officer there anyway for a hearing, so if something happens, they're there. But downstairs where the parole office is, there's where the park police are. They're separate, completely part, separate parts of the building. Downstairs and above it in the other part of the building is District Court.
So in other words, when Judge Durr is hearing cases, there's generally a police officer there in the court?
Yes, yes.
Because I'm thinking about that video that went around last week.
Well, and Judge Durr is not sentencing anyone to any length of time. She's just hearing cases and traffic courts and stuff like that, setting bail if needed, but most sort of bail hearings don't happen who are courtroom alive. We do them video-wise here at the police station. So anytime we do an arraignment, it's downstairs in our lockup area, it's video arraignment. So Judge Durr is well protected. There's enough police officers there all the time.
I like to hear that, thank you.
I would also just, just, for my colleagues, clarification also. When there are incarcerated persons being brought to the building, they're under the supervision of the constable's office, so there is additional.
That's correct, or the sheriff's, either or, yes.
There is additional security for them also.
That's correct, thank you for clarifying that.
I have a separate question. I was just wondering about an update on the camera register that you have. I can't remember the name of the system.
I think our person that hides in that back room can give us the number. I don't know the number. She tracks it, Kristina tracks that for us.
Is it going well, though?
It's going well, yes. We've had a register, we keep hammering it home, and you see, we were on the news last week. I asked them to repeat that for us, so we get it out there. So I think that a lot of, and I always tell, we don't see your cameras. I think people are, were concerned about that. I don't think they're anymore realizing it's a registry. And they can get alerts, like tomorrow, if there's any serious weather issues, we could put an alert out, say, you know, if this is going on, pay attention to it, so.
Do you ever put, you don't put crime alerts out, though, right?
Only if it's a crime in progress, and we have to notify the neighbors. No, we don't. We didn't want that to be, when we brought that before, we didn't want that to, people be inundated with crimes that were going on. There's enough that we put out there through social media and the reports that people should be aware of, and in the newspaper, too.
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. Our next item is the Township Auditor Update.
Mr. President, Mr. Anderson is away, perhaps working on his stand-up routine, I'm not sure. But he did have.
It might be a while.
He did have an opportunity to review the financial reports and found no irregularities.
Thank you for that uncharacteristically short update. We will now move to the Township Manager Update. Mr. Berman?
An update on the library project there in the midst of demolition of the interior of the library. It's selective demolition, and they're moving really quickly. In addition, the board approved change order number one last month for the demolition of Number 1 Mill Road, and that is scheduled to begin on or about January 16th. The Pennsy Trail Project update is as follows. The, there are really three walls, but two primary walls. One behind the Lanark Shopping Center, and that is, materials are scheduled to be delivered approximately January 21st, and following that, a little bit later in the project, they'll be doing the abutment walls here on Manoa Road, and those materials will be delivered later. And so that's all I have this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, I move to approve the meeting minutes for December 11th?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The next item for our consideration is approval of warrants. Commissioner McCluskey?
Motion to approve the following warrant. Number one, 2024, totaling $4,578,674.43. General sewer fund payroll for December 21st, 2023, in the amount of $770,659.46. General sewer fund payroll for January 4th, 2024, in the amount of $865,286.31. General fund disbursements, number one, 2024, in the amount of $816,642.6. Sewer fund disbursements, number one, 2024, in the amount of $273,095.2. Community development block grant fund disbursement, number one, 2024, in the amount of $98,435.97. Capital Fund, Capital Projects Fund disbursement, number one, 2024, in the amount of $1,554,924.38. American Rescue Plan Fund disbursement, number one, 2024, in the amount of $169,662.82. Credit card statement ending December 27th, 2023, in the amount of $29,968.41.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any questions or comments about the warrants? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next item on our agenda is a tax assessment appeal stipulation for our approval.
Motion to approve the settlement and stipulation of counsel on the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for the property located at 124 Harvard Road, DC Folio, number 22-07-00616-01, pending in the Court of Common Pleas, Delaware County, number 2023-003226, and authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute necessary documents.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any questions or comments on this tax assessment appeal? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
No.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes? I'm sorry, Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next, we've been considering four ordinances this evening. The first ordinance for our consideration, P-19 of 2023, relating to traffic. I will entertain a motion.
Yes. I move to adopt the readings of ordinance number P-19, or 2023, or authorizing restrictions on the following high, or highways, parking zones in front of 1611 Woodmere Way?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any questions or comments? This is obviously a second reading, something we've already adopted. Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next ordinance, also a second reading, is ordinance P-20 of 2023, amending Chapter 165 of our code relating to taxation.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-20, 2023, amending the ordinance adopted June 30th, 1986, and known as the general laws of the township of Haverford. Yeah, I think I'm, sorry. Haverford further amending Chapter 165, taxation, Article 6, property tax credit to qualifying volunteers of Bon Air, Brookline, Lanark, Manoa, and Oakmont Fire Companies.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any questions or comments? It's the second reading, we've already passed this once, so Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next, for our consideration, ordinance number P-1 of 2024. This is ordinance amending Chapter 95, recycling.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-1, 2024, amending Chapter 95, Article 3, recycling, Section 95-13, by including collection of recyclables at all Haverford Township community events.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any questions or comments on this?
What's the definition of a community event?
It should be in your packet. I don't have that off the top of my head, but I will say, this is something the EP is requiring us to do as part of our grant process.
So the definition, yeah, the definition of a community event is any Haverford Township or outside organization participating and/or sponsoring a community event in the township shall be responsible for the collection of recyclable materials, to include aluminum cans, bi-metallic cans, paper, plastic bottles, and containers and glass.
Yeah, I guess, does it apply to things on this school district, and does it apply to baseball tournaments, or?
I imagine, I think the school district may not, because that's school district property, and I'm not sure it's within our jurisdiction, but any baseball event, I assume, is working through the cooperation of the township, and I would expect it to be, you know, seeking our permission, and therefore should be, should be subject to this. It is obviously an issue of placing signage and labels on recycling containers and what materials are recyclable.
Looking for clarification.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Finally, our final ordinance for consideration tonight, ordinance number P-2 of 2024. This is a traffic ordinance.
I move to adopt the first reading of ordinance, number P-2, or 2024, establishing and rescinding tra, traffic restrictions on the highways, parking time, or time, or time limited to establish on the west side of Austin Road, or from Brookline, too, but not including 1204 Austin Road. 15-minute parking from 8:00 AM to 4:00, or to 4:00 PM, Monday, or through Friday. Parking prohibited at all times to every sin east side of Austin Road, or from Brookline, or to Sagamore. West side of Austin, from Brookline, to 1.35 feet there, or south there thereof, special parking zones to every sin on the west side of Austin Road, approximately, or like, or 75 feet south of, or of its intersection with Brookline.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Could I, could I ask, could I ask a question here? As I understand, we are going to establish a time parking limit on the west side of Alston Road. But we are rescinding the parking restriction that is on both sides of Alston Road. Is that right? Well, does that mean now there's just unlimited parking on the east side of Alston Road from Brookline to Sagamore?
So we're rescinding the no parking at any time and making a 15-minute parking on both sides of Alston Road, rescinding the special purpose parking, which is a handicap spot.
This is in front of St. Faith, is that?
In front of St. Faith, that's correct. There's been a parking problem there with the different uses of the building now, which zoning is working through with some issues that are happening there. There's been a long-established daycare there, and then there was additional use of the property.
Sorry, I'm not trying to be difficult as possible. This is written poorly. We're establishing parking time, limited parking on the west side of Alston. Is there parking on the east side of Austin Road?
Yes, there is, yes.
That's been an issue up there for a long, long.
And that's not changing, wait.
That part's not changing, no.
Yeah. No, no, yeah, I was referring to the other thing.
We're trying to keep, keep the parking moving there instead of tying up, and the problem is the traffic jam on Alston because of the drop-offs in the morning, noon, and afternoon, and the cars that are parked there now with the additional use of the property, which is causing traffic jams there and safety issues. We're trying to open the road up a little wider.
Yeah, I received lots of calls about this.
Are we doing anything to restrict parking on the east side of Alston Road from Brookline to Sagamore?
On the east side of Alston Road, we're rescinding no.
Prohibition, right.
No parking there.
Right.
So we're opening that up.
To just parking at all times? Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure we just didn't miss, we didn't miss something. So we're doing time restrictions on the west side of Alston, we're opening parking on the east side?
That's correct. Do you want me to read it again?
Do you want me to read it again?
Connor, it's music to my ears, but it's up to you. I think, I think everybody, honestly, I think I've confused them more than you would, so let's go ahead and just get this over with.
Let's go.
So, all right, does anybody else have any comments that aren't inane about this ordinance? Hearing none, Mr. Berman, call the roll.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. We now move to resolutions on the agenda. We have several for our consideration. The first resolution, 2353 of 2024, is a resolution relating to document destruction.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2353 2024 that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, Delaware, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, in accordance with the Municipal Records Manual hereby authorizes the disposition of public records.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this resolution?
One quick thing. I ask this every year. Who is the company that we're going to use? I think it's this.
Typically, we use Wiggins.
That's, that's good, and these are just things that we have to by law get.
We have to make a record of the destruction and the board has to approve it by resolution.
These are just the physical, I mean, we have digital records?
Not evolved the records, no. We're not required to keep the records. We're getting the permission to destroy the records that were permitted by law to destroy.
Okay, so both physical and digital?
Yes, we may have some physical remnants of them based on what work was completed, but we're not required to keep them. We're referring specifically to the hard copies.
Okay.
In regards to, when I looked at this, it made reference to Pennsylvania law. Is that where we base our time schedule? Because I see that for the different types of records, there's very specific years being referenced that, you know, this year and earlier, this year and earlier. Is our timeline based on the Pennsylvania statute or does it deviate from it in some way?
It's the guidelines of the Municipal Records Manual, which is published by the Pennsylvania and Museum Commission, I believe, and we are not deviating from that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on our document destruction resolution? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. The next resolution for our consideration is the Resolution 2354, Annual Fee Schedule.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2354 2024, approving the annual fee schedule for 2024.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
The only question I have is, it looks to me, I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly, that with the exception of a few minor modifications to the scadium fees, and then I guess the assignment detail for police and paramedics, the fee schedule itself seems to be unchanged from last year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And just so the public knows, the assignment fee for the police officers changed because our contract with the FUP changed, so therefore we have to update our fee schedule to make it accurate, consistent with what will be charged.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on our annual fee schedule? Hearing none, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. The next resolution for our consideration is the reappointment of David R. Berman to a two-year contract as our township manager and the secretary of the board, commencing tonight and ending on January 5, 2026.
So moved.
Oh, did I say? Oops, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to reappoint David R. Berman to a two-year contract as township manager slash secretary commencing January 8, 24, and ending on January 5, 2026.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments on the reappointment of David Berman to a two-year contract as township manager?
I'm thrilled that you're stuck with us for, for the next two years. It's been great to work with you. I hope that we haven't drove you nuts yet, so.
I can feel the love from my left, but thank you very much.
This is so embarrassing. I'm so happy to have you back. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Berman, why don't you take the roll on the vote to retain you as township manager?
Commissioner Gondek.
I gladly vote yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yeah, yes.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Our next resolution for consideration is the Resolution 2356. This would be 4,008 Darby Road revision for new land development sewer extension.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number 2356-2024, approving the 4,008 Darby Road revision for new development sewer extension. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on 4,008 Darby Road? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next, for our consideration, Resolution number 2357. This is the use of ARPA funds for playground equipment.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution number 2357 2024 that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township hereby approves the use of $50,000 of the township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation to replace two baseball cages at Grange Park.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this use of ARPA funds? Hearing none, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Our next resolution for our consideration is Resolution 2358. This is a resolution relating to professional consultant fees.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2358 2024, approving its 2024 fee schedule for professional consultants.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? I will clarify for folks reading the schedule. This is, this is a schedule for us to charge, to charge out to different people when we are to be reimbursed for the fees, costs, charges, and expenses of the municipality's professional consultants. So, just wanted to make that clarification. Any other questions or comments?
And this is just really for engineering and legal, correct?
This is, that's correct, yeah. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Finally, our last resolution to be considered this evening is Resolution 2359 of 2024. This is another use of ARPA funds relating to playground equipment.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution number 2359 2024 that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township hereby approves the use of $24,116 of the township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation for the replacement of playground equipment at Hilltop Park.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments about this use of ARPA funds? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
That concludes resolutions. We have two change orders to be considered tonight, both of which, excuse me, both of which need to be ratified individually. So, the first change order we will consider is ratifying a change order regarding the township library.
Mr. President.
Yes, Commissioner.
Motion to ratify change order number one with Rycon Construction in the amount not to exceed $22,500 for the proper removal and disposition of unforeseen asbestos materials in the Haverford Township free library.
Second.
There's a motion and a second before us, if I may. Commissioner Forstie Grupp, I am informed that this is actually change order number two, and this is just a typographical error in our agenda. If you would accept that change to your motion to make it change order number two, and then if whichever of my colleagues seconded it, we'll ratify that as well. We can move on?
Yes, ratified.
And second.
Excellent. For our consideration is change order number two with Rycon Construction. Any other questions or comments from any of my colleagues? Hearing none, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Also, for our consideration tonight, a motion to ratify change order number, change order number one with McCloskey Mechanical Contractors, Inc., involving the scadium.
Motion to ratify change order number one with McCloskey Mechanical Contractors, Inc., in the amount of $40,006.20 for the proper replacement of the deteriorated steel, steel dunage, which establishes the foundation for the cooling towers currently under construction on the roof of the Haverford Township scadium.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this?
Just, just for the record, I have no connection to McCloskey Mechanical Contractors. It's not a fairly, it's not a totally uncommon last name in this area, and until I got this agenda, I did not know of McCloskey Mechanical Contractors. So, no relation, no connection.
Thank you for that clarification. McCloskey, we look forward to you staying involved in this, in this vote and, and in this contract.
I guess just for clarification to the public, the reason why this change order was, was needed is because there was an anticipated amount of structural steel that was going to be replaced or repaired during the cooling tower project, and when they got the cooling towers off and were able to further inspect and clean, they realized that there was additional damage that needed to be repaired in order for the project to be successful. So, this, this was not able to be foreseen until the actual cooling towers renovation started.
Thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Gondek. Any other questions or comments from anybody? Hearing none, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Next item on our agenda involves the evaluation of a professional services agreement.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Trombetta.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a professional service agreement with Discover Haverford to administer the Business Revitalization and Modernization Matching Grant Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments about the professional services agreement with Discover Haverford? Hearing none, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
We now move to contract awards. We have four of them to consider tonight. First is within our police municipal mechanical and energy preventive maintenance contract.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve a police municipal mechanical energy preventive maintenance contract with the Tustin Group, Norristown, Pennsylvania, in the amount of year one, $20,644, and year two, $21,698.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions about this contract with Tustin Group? Hearing none, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next, for our consideration, is a professional services contract relating to the scadium.
Motion to enter into professional services contract with the BKP Architects of Philadelphia, PA for architectural design services and preparation of construction documents related to the Haverford Township scadium locker room renovation and space planning project in a cost not to exceed $109,920.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this professional services Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Did you ask me?
Commissioner Holmes, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The honeymoon's over, isn't it? Really? And finally, oh, wait, let's see. Next for our consideration is Darby Creek.
Darby Creek.
Yes, the, we now consider an award for the Darby Creek Trail extension.
Mr. President, motion to award the Darby Creek Trail Southern Extension Phase One to Premier Concrete Incorporated, Brumwell, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $125,975, contingent upon the execution of the contract and supply of the required bonds and insurance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the contract award for the Darby Creek Trail Southern Extension? Hearing none, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Finally, within our Parks and Recreation Department, we have consideration of a contract for an HVAC system for the community recreational and environmental center.
Mr. President, motion to approve a one-year HVAC maintenance contract for the Crick with Train Technologies, King of Prussia, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $18,841.29.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this contract? Hearing none, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next for our consideration is our two purchases. The first purchase for consideration involves playground equipment at the Grange Park.
Mr. President, motion to authorize the purchase of two baseball cages and fencing at Grange Park for Miller Sports Construction, Westchester, Pennsylvania, under CoStarz contract number 008-E22-184 in the amount of $50,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Sorry. It's just worth noting, this contract is awarded as a consequence of the resolution moments earlier where we, which we approved the use of ARPA funds for this work. Sorry for the interruption. Go ahead, Mr..
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Also, we will consider the purchase of replacement play equipment at Hilltop Park.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of replacement play equipment structure from Recreation Resource, Cannon Square, Pennsylvania, under CoStarz contract number 014-E22-249 in the amount of $24,116 at Hilltop Park.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments about the purchase of this equipment for Hilltop Park? Hearing none, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. The next item on our agenda is a holdover from last week. This is our consideration, right? Our consideration of the Civil Service Commission. Last week, a position, a six-year position on the Civil Service Commission. An explanation is necessary as to why this was tabled and why we are considering this tonight, and we'll take this time right now to explain it. The Civil Service Commission, unlike a lot of other commissions, in fact, unlike any of the other boards or commissions that we have, has within it a role played by an alternate on the Civil Service Commission. It was the conclusion of a majority of this board that the alternate's candidacy for the full-time position should be considered, and it was, the interview was made available, and Mr. O'Connor was interviewed by the board last week, between last week's meeting and this week's meeting, and was added to the list of candidates for consideration to serve on the Civil Service Commission. As I said, it was a uniquely situated set of circumstances in that we had existing already an alternate, and it was raised, and I think raised legitimately by members of this board, that we should consider that candidacy as well, and we did. So before us now is a motion to appoint someone to serve on the Civil Service Commission.
Yes, I moved to.
For a six-year, for a six-year term to expire on December 31, 2029, and we will accept all nominations now.
Yes, I moved to appoint Mark O'Connor to the Civil Service Commission for a six-year term to expire December 31 or 2029.
We have a motion. Any second? We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other nominations?
Motion to appoint Monae Riley to serve on the Civil Service Commission for a six-year term to expire on December 31, 2029.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Monae Riley. Do we have any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close and a second. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. For consideration for this board is to appoint either Mr. O'Connor or Ms. Riley to serve on the Civil Service Commission for a six-year term to expire December 31, 2029. Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
I have a question before. So if we are to appoint Mr. O'Connor, then the alternate spot will be empty. So how will we fill that?
We would then, I think, the plan would be, if Mr. O'Connor were, if the alternate position would be, would be open, we would declare the alternate position open. I think we would then seek applicants for that, but consider the existing applicants to have applied for the alternate position as well, therefore not need to do any, any re-interviews of anyone who's done that, but re-advertise the position of alternate, conduct those interviews between now and our February meeting, and then, and then appoint an alternate if the alternate spot is open to this evening at the February meeting.
Thank you.
It would be, that's an excellent point. The alternate position, I believe, has a specific term, so whoever filled, whoever we took to put in that alternate position would, would be filling the unexpired term of the alternate. I don't know what that term is right now for the alternate position, but I would certainly know it before we act, if necessary, in February.
I might be wrong, but I think that Mark was just appointed as the alternate last year. So I think he's, he's one year into his term as an alternate.
Right. I do know that Mr. O'Connor was appointed in '23, so whatever that term was, and find it out.
Six-year term, just like the other one, I believe.
I, I don't know, but there is an answer to that. I know it's not, I know it's not a one-year term, so I do believe there would, in the event that Mr. O'Connor were to be appointed this evening, there would be an opening in the alternate position, and we would seek to fill that as quickly as possible. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments?
I, just for the sake of clarification, I just pulled it up real quick. It looks like his term, Mark O'Connor's current term goes till December of 2028.
Okay, so that would, that would be consistent with a six-year term. Excellent. Is there any other questions or comments on this appointment? Again, I repeat, the nominations before you are Mr. O'Connor and Ms. Riley, and Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
Mark O'Connor.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Ms. Riley.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Ms. Riley.
Commissioner Cavender.
Monae Riley.
Commissioner Quinn.
Mark O'Connor.
Commissioner Hart.
Monae Riley.
Commissioner McCollum.
Mark O'Connor.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Mark O'Connor.
Commissioner Holmes.
Mark O'Connor. Mr. O'Connor is appointed to Civil Service Commission to a six-year term to expire December 31, 2029. As a consequence of that, the alternate for Civil Service Commission position is currently vacant, and as I indicated, I would like this board to validate my suggestion that the three other candidates who were under consideration for the Civil Service Commission position all be held over for consideration of the alternate, as well as we declare the position open. Invite in the next week any interest from anyone who would like to be interviewed for that position, and that we place on the February agenda the vacancy on the Civil Service Commission for the alternate position, and that we appoint that that night.
I think we should just clarify with the candidates who already applied that they are interested in, in fact, in being an alternate.
Oh, yeah, and we will contact those candidates to confirm that they want to remain considered for the position, and thanks for that clarification. Commissioner Hart, I, more important for us, I just didn't want anyone to think that we needed to re-interview anyone who we already interviewed for the position. Any other questions or comments on that?
No, but if I could just do a clarification about the Grange appointments.
Oh, yeah, yeah, good, thanks. Mr. Hart, why don't you, why don't you go ahead and take the floor and discuss the issues of the Grange that were raised last week when that was tabled as well?
Right. So last year, we changed our length of term for the Grange appointments from one year to two years, but we felt that the Grange needed to change their bylaws to allow for that. In fact, they do not need to. So the candidates, the three people that we appointed last year will continue for another year.
Thank you. Excellent. Thanks for that clarification. We did get advice on that, and we also have re-advertized the position for the Vacancy Committee and the vacant property review committee, and any resumes that are sent to our township or any interest that is expressed will be passed on to us, and we will consider those and hopefully be able to fill those positions at the February meeting as well. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues on the current state of appointments to our boards and commissions? Hearing none, we will move on to the continuation of Citizens Forum for non-agenda items. This is where anybody who did not sign up as a registered speaker but would like to speak on any topic is free to do so again. It says non-agenda items, but if anyone is so moved, they can speak on an agenda item. Is there anyone to the left? Yes, Mr. Hall.
I hope he has a song.
Happy New Year.
Todd Hall, I reside in the second ward. No song tonight, but since you mentioned it, Haverford Township is a great township, and one of the many great things about the township is our Parks and Rec Department, and I'm here this evening to thank the Parks and Rec Department for the Kids Night Out Program at the Crick. It's three dates in the winter months, on Friday evenings, an opportunity for kids to get out of the house, play games, et cetera, and I just thank the township very much for this program once again. The reasons being that we have a lot of older homes in the township, especially in the second ward, without a lot of space for children to run around in, so this is helpful. It also provides a way for, you know, children to get off screens, which is always helpful, too, and if possible, in future years, if the staffing and scheduling can allow for it, and it's a success this year, I'd encourage the Parks and Rec Department to add even more nights in the future years. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Does anybody else want to get up and say something nice? Anybody on the right-hand side would like to get up?
All right. So, my name is Victor Barsky. I happen to be on the Environmental Committee and on the Senior Citizen Committee, and I just wanted to thank David Berman for putting up, putting up with us for another two years for the citizens of Haverford Township, and good to have you. That's it.
Okay, good, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Barsky. Anybody else like to speak? Next item on our agenda is any new business. Does any colleague of mine have any new business to bring before the board?
So I have a quick thing about the Grange.
Is that belonging to other business, or do you need us to take action?
It might. It depends.
Okay, it's all yours.
The tree that fell down there that's become an issue, and they might have to take other trees down to get to those trees, and down there, they love their trees. I mean, like we all do, but the historical significance of the tree there could become, could become an issue, so, and costs and stuff could become an issue, so I just want to make the board aware of that, that stuff before.
The tree that fell is actually a pretty historical tree. It's about 300 years old. It was actually purportedly came from John Bartram and brought to the Grange, so it's one of three trees of about that age, but it's going to be quite an expense to, it's a very large tree. It's going to be a very expensive project to remove the tree.
Well, thank you for letting us know that. Is it of an emergent nature where you need action immediately, or just is this the kind of situation where the township can come back to us and simply ask for our validation?
Township has only evaluated it, so it's, yeah, it's not, it's not a danger to anyone at the moment.
But its removal is of some urgency.
Before the spring.
Yeah.
Is there any action you are asking us to take at this point?
No.
Other than to provide you guys cover, and you have it?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Does anybody else have any new business or business there, not sure is new or otherwise?
I would like to bring up a topic. I know that it's something that's come up in prior meetings last year. I know it's a matter that's been, you know, communicated by various of our constituents to us individually as commissioners, and as commissioners, we've had some conversations amongst ourselves, but for the sake of sunshine law, now that we're all together, I like to bring this out, the vape shop situation in this township. It seems that the number of vape shops seems to be climbing and increasing every time there's a vacant property. I think it's something that we really need to address. I don't know, I know that in prior conversations in, you know, in our meetings, there was talk about looking at, I don't know whether it would be an ordinance or a zoning amendment, but I would ask if anyone has a status on that, and if not, if either, whether it's appropriate, whether the ordinance committee could take that issue up or the zoning committee, I would defer to Mr. Walco as to which direction that should go into, but I, I think it's something that we really need to put on the front burner.
We can certainly begin, have began working on the text amendment to put that ordinance together. From a planning point of view, I'm going to need direction. I think staff's going to need direction for rezoning where that particular use should be located, and if there is a desire to have restrictions of that use from schools or playgrounds, we're going to need to make sure that that would work with the current status of a layout, to make sure that that use is permitted in those districts, because the law does require us to account for that use. We can't, can't say it's be permitted, but then in reality, it's not based upon those restrictions. So there is a planning aspect of it, and I'm not sure if that's something that the ordinance committee would take on, or if that's something they'd work with the Planning Commission to look into, but certainly we're in the background putting the text amendments together to make that happen.
Can I, I guess, do we define what a vape shop is? Because there's a lot of convenience stores that sell vapes, and do they have to have a certain proportion of vapes in their store, or?
We would define what a smoke store would be. Depending on the codes, I think a lot of municipalities differ that from a, your classic cigar store, but we also, I would recommend making changes to the definition of a convenience store to make it clear what is a store that primarily deals with smoking products and one that actually does sell primarily other types of goods and may have cigarettes or other smoking products, but not primarily focused in that area of business. So I think both definitions, to create the definition of a smoke store and then refine the definition of a convenience store would be part of this amendment.
How does that work if you have convenience stores that then meet the definition of a vape store? Do you just grandfather them in, or?
If it's, if it currently has a use occupancy certificate acting as a convenience store, they would be grandfathered in, because we'd be changing the definition, taking that out of the classification, once they've already been established. But again, moving forward, if anyone wants to apply for a use permit, there'd be an evaluation as to what that use is and a classification from our zoning officer, whether it would be a convenience store or a vape store based upon the criteria in the definitions that would be established in this ordinance.
But that establishment would have to be open and operational with a UNO prior to the passage of any change to our amendment, any change to our ordinance?
I would submit that if, for a permit, if we have advertised our ordinance, even though it's not yet enacted, since it would be a permit, if we've advertised that ordinance and then you submit for the permit, you'd be subject to our ordinance.
And so if I'm hearing you correctly, procedurally, it sounds like you would work with our, the first step would be for you and our ordinance committee to discuss the parameters of the ordinance, and then to, I guess the second step would be Planning Commission?
I, I think it could happen at the same time.
At the same time.
I think I can start to provide some drafts I've looked into, and I know that Mr. Berman's been looking into the issue as well, as to appropriate text changes for the committee's review and consideration. We can provide the uses and can provide the restrictions and classifications, and then just plug in later on, okay, this use is permitted in this district or this district or this district, and particular areas that it could be, and again, legally needs to be permitted within, within the township.
Okay. I guess the only, the last comment I would just simply have is, and obviously I can only speak for myself, I'd encourage any of my colleagues to chime in, but this is of a matter that I view as of significance, so I would respectfully ask if this could, this particular project could kind of be put on the front burner.
I agree, agree with that. I think we all get calls or, or emails. I think Mike even on his first day got lots of calls about.
About people in your ward.
Yeah, and they, it can advertise as a convenience store, but we all know if it's knows, we're not going to go to the smoke shop and get milk and bread. So, right? Like, I'm not trying to be. Like, I'm not trying to be funny, but that's, but, but I don't think, like, we're going to drive to a time, because they advertise, they have signs outside to say, we are your one-stop-stop bus shop for a convenience, so, it's just, they can get away with that stuff, and that's why we have to find in a way, we might not be able to ban them completely, but just see where it can be.
I think a key aspect is to address the situation of these popping up in close proximity to our schools and our playgrounds, that's probably the biggest concern with me, not necessarily what adults do amongst themselves, but the aspect on the juveniles and the youth of our community.
Mr. Walco, let me ask you a question, is this an issue of, is this a zoning issue, or is this defining, is this covered by a different area of the law?
This would be a zoning issue related to the use of a smoke store, which a lot of municipalities do have that as a defined use, particularly most of the municipalities like Havreford around the Ring of Philadelphia, once they impose these additional taxes on tobacco, the sales go right outside of the border, so a lot of municipalities, I can say Cheltenham, Upper Darby, Narberth, off the top of my head, have this definition in place to better regulate smoke stores, and as an aside, it appears every, anytime a Wawa is to close down to become a super Wawa, with gaps, the smoke stores will go into the old Wawas, it's a pretty common technique that they would do, take over that.
Now, Narberth is about the size of this room when it's expanded, did they manage to, to get away with zoning them in such a way that they couldn't fit anywhere in the borough?
Narberth has two commercial districts, one of them is their downtown commercial district, which is more of a family-friendly walkable community, and they restricted the smoke stores from that district, along with a lot of other non-desirable type uses, and then moved it to the district of Montgomery Avenue, which is, again, a viable business area, well-traveled, and it's a commercial district, so they said if you want to have a smoke store, you can have a smoke store, and it's in this zoning district and their other commercial area, but not the downtown area where the children or the schools are more closely located, daycares.
Well, that's going to be a cage match to see which ward ends up getting the vape shops, but I guess we'll see what happens.
Well, I do have a question, can, so, just being a little new to the process, can we limit the number of these shop?
You, you cannot limit the number of the shops, you would be able to create distance requirements between the shops and from other, again, if you wanted to limit from another smoke store, or from a place of worship, or a playground, or a school, you could do that, but in making those limitations, you still have to make sure that you are creating viable opportunities for that use within whatever district is permitted.
And you have to create multiple opportunities?
I would say commercially reasonable opportunity, more than one parcel that would exist, or no parcels, but, but you can't say no more than five are allowed in the township.
Mr. Walco, if one is, if one winds up getting grandfathered, I believe, if one gets grandfathered in, but then the ordinance is passed, and then that goes out of business, and then changes to a different business to that location, that grandfathering effect for that location disappears, is that correct?
Yes, they would have to have the intent to have abandoned that use, so arguably it could change over within a certain amount of time, I'd have to review your code, to what really would classify as an abandonment of that use, it would become a non-conforming use.
Or if it stayed vacant for a period of time?
Stayed vacant for a period of time, if it was put on the market for just generally trying to get new tenants in that location, that would show the intent that they don't want to keep a smoke store, they're looking for a tenant, and they don't care who it would be, but yes, once, once that use becomes non-conforming, if it's then ceased and there's an intention to stop that use, they could not then come back, just because, you know, there was one there years ago when this ordinance, before the ordinance was in place.
Thank you.
Chief, there is, driving a lot of this is a concern about tobacco getting to the hands of kids, these are near playgrounds or near schools, do you mind commenting on what efforts or what programs are used by our PD, I guess to enforce our current tobacco laws?
Yes, Commissioner, the Police Department has had a tobacco compliance program for quite a number of years now, working with the state, they, the state comes in with undercover buyers multiple times a year, accompanied by a uniformed police officer, the underage purchaser goes into the store to see if they can purchase, and we have had multiple citations issued for underage sales in a few of the vape shops also, so I know there's been many comments about the Police Department prosecuting or keeping a close check, we do, but obviously, we can't go and buy tobacco products that would be sold to us, this is why this program has been so successful over the years, so it does rotate around through different categories, but we just had one very recently, where citations were issued.
In those circumstances, you go, sorry, Commissioner Gondik, I'll be done in a sec, in those circumstances, you not only go look at vape shops, but you go to Wawas, 7-Eleven, supermarkets, anybody who sells tobacco?
Any particular stores, we go to every, any store that sells tobacco products, that's correct.
If a store gets enough citations, can they lose their license to sell?
Well, first time around, it's a citation to the clerk or end of business owner, I'm not sure how many sales would make them lose their license to sell tobacco, we have not encountered that yet, usually one time is all it takes.
And I guess that kind of was part of my question, is, do we have a metric by which, I know that obviously there's state licensing to sell tobacco, but we also have nuisance ordinances, is there a threshold that exists where we would be able to enact our nuisance ordinance against establishments such as that?
They wouldn't even come close to that threshold, we haven't had that many issues along that line that would raise that and come into that category at the present time.
Thank you.
And you go by a lot of these stores, and there isn't anybody there, you don't see anybody walking in, so I mean, if we can continue to do, to be doing that, then a lot of these spots will close on themselves, and that could answer an issue too, is like, not to go, go, to go, to go, and when I get asked about, 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 that's what everybody spreads around to their constituents is not to go, or, or, that's what everybody who asks me, me, this stuff, they all tell all their friends just not to go, and then that solves a big, big issue there too.
Any other questions or comments on this issue? I think, I think Mr. Walco has his charge, and I think this, the best group to, to address this would be our subcommittee of the board that deals with ordinances, and what I'll recommend, after we reconfigure that committee, is for that committee to meet with Mr. Walco and to begin the process of evaluating and constructing ordinances for us to consider. Does anybody else have any new business for the board? Hearing none, we will now move to other business, Mr. Gondik?
Thank you, I don't really have a whole lot going on in January to make any kind of announcements about, I just, I just hope everyone had a safe, happy, and healthy holidays in December, and had an enjoyable and safe New Year, going into January, just stay warm and stay safe with the snow that they seem to be calling for more frequently. Just one announcement, it came to my attention right around the holidays, towards the end of December, that the Delaware County Health Department had sent out to approximately 70% of the county's household, a Detera drug deactivation system, which my understanding is, is a bag that if you have prescription medications, that you can put up to, I think it's like 45 pills into this bag, I think you add a little bit of water and shake it, and it deactivates the pills, it's, it was done as part of the opioid settlement monies that the county received, and my understanding is that it's, you know, a step towards trying to minimize drug overdose epidemic going around the county that unfortunately is, you know, no one, no one is immune from, so if you have those bags and you've used them, that's great, if you don't, if you do have them and you don't need them, you don't have medications that you can use in them, I would encourage you not to throw these bags away, but to provide them to people who may be able to use them, whether they be family members or friends, so I would encourage you to take that extra step, because these are a very valuable resource, on top of that, it's the environmentally friendly way to dispose of these pharmaceutical drugs, so with that, I just hope everyone has a happy and safe January, and that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Gondik. Commissioner Fausti-Grupp?
I just want to extend another thanks to everyone who applied to be considered for a position on one of the townships, many advisory boards and commissions, it shows an investment in what our township is and will be in the future, and even if someone did not get appointed or withdrew their candidacy, I do appreciate, I know we all appreciate that, that, that impulse to serve our larger community. This may be, I hope this invitation will be echoed by Ward Seven and Eight, but there will be a constituent meeting on Thursday, January 25th, at 7:00 PM at the Crack, for residents of Ward Two, Seven, and Eight, to hear about township initiatives from representatives from the major township departments like police, parks and rec, and public works, so I hope folks will, will come on out to that meeting, you'll get a flyer in the mail, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Fausti-Grupp. Commissioner McCloskey?
I hope everyone had a happy New Year, just to reiterate what the chief talked about earlier, there's supposed to be some storms this week, I know in the Third Ward, we've had some water issues with people's basements, so anything residents can do to prepare for that, obviously, is beneficial in advance, I hope everyone has a good month of January, and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner McCloskey. Commissioner Cavener?
Thank you, I want to congratulate Dave Berman on his reappointment, I'm looking forward to working with you in the next two years, Discover Havreford is having a business meet and greet at the Grange on Wednesday, the 10th, I mentioned that for folks, the last thing is just, next Monday is MLK Day, and I'm sure there are a lot of service activities going on around the township, but I would just encourage everybody, even if it's just something around your neighborhood, try to spend the day doing a little bit of service for others, that's the spirit of the day, and I think it's important for all of us, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavener. Commissioner Quinn?
Okay, well, the Eagles, the Eagles game was really bad last night, but I got some great news, that the Eagles bus, the Eagles, or NBC 10, I believe, does a bus every year, and that road to Vic, or Victory Bus will be down here on Brookline, so at 12:30 on Thursday of this, this week, so before they get on the plane to go down, down south, let's go cheer them on and hope they bring back a win, which I think, think they will, I do, but, and, and, and I hope, I think, I hope everybody's year, year is off to a great, great start, I know the nine of us up here, we wish that we don't get any snow at all that they're here, so I'm hoping everybody agrees with me there, and Mike, I hope your first night on the board was good, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Hart?
Yes, just to reinforce what Commissioner Fausti-Grupp mentioned, that there'll be a Second, Seventh, and Eighth Ward constituent meeting on Thursday, January 25th, at the Crack at 7:00 PM, and we will be sending out a flyer about it, I also wanted to take the opportunity to welcome my colleague, Mr. McCollum, Mike and I have known each other for quite a number of years from baseball, while he has very big shoes to fill in replacing Commissioner Wexler, I'm sure he's definitely up to the task, so welcome aboard.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Chief Iowa and Dave Berman, Dave, congratulations on the new contract, both of those gave me a nice tour of the building and facilities here in December, so that was nice, and the rest of my colleagues, thank you for welcoming me to the board, I'm looking forward to four years of getting a lot of good things done for the township, as far as current events and things like that, I'm looking to work with the Hilltop Pacific Association, get that straightened out, and try to get some, some good community events back on the calendar, other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners Hart and Commissioner McCollum. Commissioner Trombetta?
Mr. President, you might recall that last month, the board passed a resolution that authorized the use of $225,000 in federal ARBA funds to administer a business revitalization and modernization matching grant program, today, I just wanted to remind folks that the application period will open on Monday, January 15th, and will close on Friday, February 16th at 4:00 PM. Businesses are encouraged to apply for this competitive matching grant program for up to $25,000 for expenses related to renovating their interior businesses and dining areas, improving exterior facade and outdoor seating spaces, purchasing and or installing energy-efficient equipment, or implementing technology upgrades. Information including eligibility criteria and a new scoring rubric can now be found on the township website under our News Plus section, thank you, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Trombetta. Just two things from me, one, we are expecting, obviously, a very significant weather event yesterday, which by all indications is going to be significant and heavy rain, what's a little unusual about it is that it's in January and not, not in August or September, it is still very, our days are still very short, a lot of this will fall after dusk or after sunset, and I just remind everybody to be very, very careful out there while they're driving, people are just back in school, and, and to err on the side of caution, if your home is flooding, leave it, if you get into an area where your car stalls, get out of the car, do not try to drive through puddles, or, or situations that you can't fully, fully fathom before you go into them, and everybody just be very careful out there. Finally, this is, this is our first regular meeting after our reorganization in 2024, 2024, for the greatest optimist in the world, is still a year that, that will probably frighten people about what may be ahead of us this year, a lot of the rhetoric, a lot of the choices people will have, a lot of the examples people will use, and some of the stories that they will tell, so at the start of that year, and just within one week of the birthday of a very, very important American and human, Martin Luther King, I will just, just read a quote of his for all of us to think about as we start in what I think is going to be a very, very significant year in America, "There is some good in the worst of us and some evil in the best of us, when we discover this, we are less prone to hate our enemies." On that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Oh, moved.
Adjourned.